The Planning Commission Citizen Advisory Committee of City of Lowell for our regular meeting on Monday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, in this world where there is justice.
Thank you. Sue, hold on please.
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Here.
Commissioner Chambers.
Here.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Kadula.
Here.
Commissioner Schraven.
Here.
Commissioner Plank is absent, and Chair Barker.
Here.
Bruce, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Allen.
In a second?
Second.
And any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
He stands excused. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion for approval.
You guys did that good.
We'll count that as one or two.
Yeah.
Dave and Tony.
Yep.
Stay clear. Any discussion? Sue?
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Kadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of our previous meeting, July tenth, twenty twenty-three, our regular meeting?
I'll make that motion.
In a second? Support. And discussion? Sue?
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Kadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes. Public comments and communications concerning items not on the agenda. Anybody have a comment, Sue? Do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Seeing none, we'll go on to old business then. A, a site plan review for four fourteen East Main Street. Is there a representative here from, Scott, Dell maybe? Is there a representative from four fourteen East Main? Please climb up and give us your name and your address, please, and then just in, you know, five minutes or so, explain what you want to do or what you've done.
Oh, yeah, okay. Name, Justin Young. I work at All-Weather Seal, which is at six eighty-seven Lincoln Lake Avenue. We rent this space at four fourteen Main. I live at four twenty-four Lincoln Lake, if that means anything. So, basically, we just have a storage barn that we needed to get off of our current property at six eighty-seven Lincoln Lake for a few months, and just to be legal, we had to fill out this plan and whatnot. So, so, yeah.
I'll ask you the question, because I'm sure it's going to come up.
How long is it going to be there?
No, I know you have that question. That's a good question, though. How long is it going to be there?
He said less than six months.
Okay. And second question, what are you planning on putting in?
At this point, we actually don't have a plan on putting anything in it. It's basically storage of a storage barn in that space.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, we'll go through the review here, site plan review, and if we have any questions, stay close and we'll put our man.
Stay here or?
No, you go.
Okay.
Thanks, Justin. Andy, you want to walk us through it?
Yep. Thank you. So, we provided a memo back in, well, in this last month's meeting, I'm not sure if it made into your packet, took it with you. We just very quickly, because this is a mixed-use zone property, whenever we have an addition or an accessory building on a property like that, they have to come to the site plan review. So, it seems like they fairly have to, is used in building, which it is. It's something where procedures, we have to run into a site plan review, because that's what we do with everybody. So, the property is only about a quarter of acre, like I said, a zone mixed-use. It's also the floodplain. It's already there, as you guys probably know. It's fourteen by forty, pre-built style shed. So, as I said, they're not going to use it for many things, and restoring the building on the property temporarily. So, this doesn't generate any parking or lighting or any typical considerations that we look at for a site plan review. The only standard when it comes to accessory buildings that would be worthy of discussion would be the overall compatibility. So, there's a standard for accessory buildings that says, if you're going to have an accessory building, it's got to be reasonably compatible with what's around it. You know, it's subjective, obviously, what that means. You know, what it means to be compatible in design, similar in terms of finished materials, color, et cetera. And given that it will only be there for a few months, that can obviously weigh into what you think is appropriate there. Quickly, on the site plan review standards, do you just want me to go through all of them?
Yes, if you would. Quick, here. Go through the office.
Okay, so. So, first one, if the use is proposed, it not adversely affecting public health, safety, or welfare, and that shall take into account the size of the building, if used on a joint property, relationship of buildings to the site, et cetera. So, we assume, when we wrote this, that the barn would be used primarily for storage, and therefore would not likely affect the public health, safety, or for welfare. We're not using it for any storage at all. That would, you know, certainly confirm that. Item B discusses safe, convenient, unconjunctive, fully defined vehicular and pedestrian circulation being provided. We've got it kind of back on the site, off of Main Street, fairly out of the way. We think that standard does not, there aren't any drives or streets or anything like that proposed here. Item C talks about public or private vehicular and pedestrian connections. And again, there is no interest, the address point does not affect any of those items within the neighborhood. D discusses removal, any significant natural features, which there would be none removed here, they would be putting it in an already paved and developed area. E refers to satisfactory assurance that any other city requirements would be met, which would be, or is a condition of approval. If approved, you don't anticipate any of those kinds of problems, given the size and sort of limited use. Then F relates to consistency with the master plan. Accessory buildings that are permitted in the master plan, we don't think those will really have any effect on the character of the neighborhood, which is particularly true if it's only going to be a temporary sort of use there. So, we don't have any significant concerns when it comes to the site plan review standards. We also reviewed quickly the floodplain overlay district standards, which would come into account here, because it is in the floodplain. They're not proposing anything big enough that would affect any floodways, or wouldn't require compensating type or anything like that. It would meet the provisions of the underlying zoning district, and they would not need to get a permit under Act four fifty-one. So, I did recommend approval with sort of the three basic conditions to be put on everything. I think that if you are inclined to specify what could be stored in that building, or how long it would be there, I think that would be fine. If only intending to keep it there for next four months, and you could say that they have to have it removed by, you know, the end of the year, or spring next year, or something like that, if you wanted to put a date on it, I think that's not required, but it's something that you could do. So, that pretty much sums it up. This is very simple, very minor, and this was probably the least impactful, you know, item that was on our agenda last month, but as I said, if it wasn't present, the commission felt inappropriate to use it this month. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you. If there are questions, I'd have to answer them, otherwise we can move forward.
Thank you, Andy. Before I open it up to the public commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, so, you said that you're looking at, how long does that sit there?
Basically, I knew that question was going to come up, so I asked my boss directly, and he had said that's six months at the longest.
Okay.
So, by spring?
That's what I, yeah, that's what I would assume. I asked him like last week, when she said I had to be here. I had no idea.
She told you.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and it's still on skid, so you just lift it up.
Exactly.
Put it on the truck.
That's exactly it. It's a pre-built structure that's made that it moved over again.
So, we can put that in as a condition, right?
Yes, yes, and I think that would be appropriate. And the other question, the flip question, would be storage. You're not planning on storing anything there currently?
I can tell you his exact words if you'd like. So.
Geez, now you're famous.
Let's see. Okay. I asked him two questions I'm expecting to be asked, how long will it be there and what will it be used for? He said just a couple months, six at most, storage and not much of it. This is exactly what he said.
Obviously, what we're concerned about is flammable and things of that nature, and we would add that under the conditions, right, Andy?
We can add that, certainly, yeah.
Well, with the fire department, do they have to, does he have to be checked by fire or?
Yeah, so, I mean, the plans are, yeah, I mean, they'll be certainly adhered around to the other departments. So, if you wanted to include a condition that would say no flammable hazardous or combustible materials, or whatever shall be stored in there, that would be fine.
For his own good, I guess, for lack of anything else, but it's strontium like cement. I mean, there is nothing close to it, frankly. There's got to be thirty foot between them and anything else, if not more.
The security of it, it's in a neighborhood, the security that's not on someone's personal property, is there, it's going to be locked up pretty tight, so no kids can get in there?
Oh, it can be. Those are specific locks to keep it, like, we have nothing in it right now, so it's not locked up or anything, I mean.
I'd make sure it's locked up even if they get it, because I've seen ones.
There's plenty of them, there's stuff like that, in the residential area.
And maybe you can put all those conditions under one or two, I don't care how we do it.
Anything else, commissioners? Thank you, Justin. I'd like to open it up to the public. Any questions from the public?
I have just one other.
Name, I'm sorry, name and address.
Eric Parkus, two fifteen West Main. I'm fine with this situation, but I'm just curious, what is the guidelines for placing sheds on your property, on a commercial property? I know Sue and Andy tried to help me a little bit, but can I? I have a commercial property by Ball's Ice Cream. Can I just place a portable shed there of any size?
Of any size?
Not of any size, you're limited to, I don't remember off the top, but you'd be limited in size to what you can do. There would be certain requirements in terms of installation, as well as who'd have to be behind to let the new building.
Do I need to fill out an application and get the approval of the board?
Yes.
For any size shed?
If it's on a commercial property, generally speaking, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion then. Commissioners, do I have a motion to approve the site plan review for four fourteen East Main Street along with the conditions that we set for?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
In a second?
I can support.
And may I ask, well, I have one clarifying question.
Sure.
So, are we setting a duration on it, and if so, what is that date?
I would say.
Like, six months or something right now?
Yes.
I think that would be seven months.
Say March first.
So, I'm adding conditions, so one of them will be the shed shall be removed by the property, no later than March first of twenty twenty-four. Use of the shed shall be limited to storage, no hazardous, flammable, or combustible material shall be stored, and six, the building shall remain locked and not used. So, the other three conditions would be, you have to pay their fees, get approval from any other agencies, if there are any other requirements. And then, they have to comply with all the ordinance, dis codes, and requirements, et cetera. And those are the three that we put on everything.
Motion is made. Any other discussion? Sue, hold on please.
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Kadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes.
Thank you. Site plan review is okay. The next old business is master plan update.
All right, so, we have been working away at the office. So, there are two things that I want to go over with you tonight. We will be at the concert, the Summer Concert Series, this coming Thursday and next Thursday, seventeenth and twenty-fourth. So, we'll have tents set up there, look for, we'll have, at least two planners will be there. So, stop by and visit us. And so, what I would like to do is to, can we turn the screen, Sue, or is there a remote around here to turn on the red?
Yes.
So, what I want to review with you is what we're proposing for the booth, and then also what we are, the questions that are going to be asked on the community survey. So, about a week ago, I emailed all of you with a proposed community survey to read through. I worked back from a couple of you in terms of its content. So, I guess I'd like to give your final blessing on that. What we will do is, if you're okay with the survey as it's written, or with any small adjustments, we will have the survey finalized, get it launched, so that way we can, one, promote it at the concert on Thursday. We'll have little flyers with QR codes, so if you walk away, you can just scan it with your phone, get ready for the survey, take it on your phone if you want to. So, as soon as the TV, or the screen, not TV, the screen comes up here, we'll first go through the boards, so this is intended to be a very informal drop-in thing, because people, we recognize that people are here to see the concert, not necessarily to hang out with us, although it would be nice if they were. We're not going to ask a ton of time, you know, from everyone who's there, ten minutes, fifteen minutes, whatever they have. We'll have a few different activities set up. So, one of them will be a board, just sort of an introductory thing that explains what we're doing, what the process is, introducing to people what is the master plan, and why is one important, which we talked about here last month, sort of the benefits of long-range planning, and then also when there are other opportunities for people to participate in the planning process. That's there just as sort of an informational thing, again, it's not anything they have to do. We're going to ask some questions on housing.
It's a little slow.
Okay.
It takes a little bit, a minute to warm up.
Okay. So, there's sort of a few different areas that we decided to focus on. One is we specifically are asking for input on West Main, basically from the railroad tracks to the city limits, the west side of town, because that's probably the area where we as, well, you as planning commissioners, we as a planner, we spend a lot of time looking at site plans, talking about landscaping access, et cetera, for that specific corridor, sort of getting some input from the moment, and sort of how that should be developed in the future. I think there would be some benefit to that, so we'll talk about that. We also would like some input from the community with respect to housing, looking at what types of additional housing, if any, in the community are necessary, and if so, where it should go, so we'll have some boards talking about that. And then, we also have what we call the penny jar activities, so we'll have ten million jars sitting out there, each will have a label on them, and everyone that comes up will have these little, you know, Dixie cup things, look like ten pennies in them, and then the idea is that they will invest their tax dollars however they want, right? So, if they're into trails, or if they're into parks, or if they're into, you know, downtown development, redevelopment, or whatever, they can sort of invest that stuff however they want. And so, I'd like to sort of review the boards with you guys, make sure that they make sense, review the topics we have on the penny jars, make sure that we're sort of hitting their priorities that we should be hitting with the community. And we can make changes, none of this is finalized, so I wanted to go over this with you, so if there's anything specific that we're missing, we can make those changes. So, as soon as the screen touches up, we will, I'll show these two guys, and we can move on. And the survey itself will be done entirely online, using Survey Monkey, which is a pretty common tool that everyone is familiar with. The idea is that we want to done, it shouldn't take people more than about ten minutes to complete it, they can do it pretty much whatever they want. So, it's something that they can complete. We'll need it open for probably a month, maybe longer, so it'll be a good long window for people to take the survey. Here we go. So, okay, so, back to the boards, so these will be printed like display size, twenty-four by thirty-six inch printouts, so we'll have these at our booth on Thursday, and we'll have the same thing this week as we have next week. So, this is the informational board that I was telling you about, that just basically described what we're doing and why it's important, and what other opportunities there are to participate in the process. So, our housing board looks like this, it just asks, what type of housing do you support? And then, we're basically looking at both density and form, right? So, on the top left, we have basically a single-family house, it would have one to four people per parcel courtyard community, which would be something where you might have multiple smaller dwelling units on one property. Tiny house or mobile home, which is on the third one over on the top, you know, there's been some discussion in a lot of communities about enabling smaller houses, enabling accessory dwelling units. We have, you know, a few different manufactured housing communities in the city, so it's important to sort of give a kind of support risk for those. Left, single-family home with an accessory dwelling, so that's accessory dwelling, I don't know if we've talked about them much here, but that's where you have either attached or detached smaller dwelling unit that's accessory to the main house on the property, like the old mother-in-law suites, or granny flats, or whatever we used to call them. A lot of the communities are enabling those and bringing them back, so we're asking if there's any interest in that. And also looking at some more dense options, like townhomes or low-rise apartments from the excuse buildings, recognizing that we're not looking at, you know, ten-story buildings in Lowell, obviously, but like the one that we had on our agenda for last month, you know, a three-story multifamily building, certainly not outside of the realm of possibility for this community. So, again, we're interested in engaging what kind of communities and work risk for these.
Andy, just a thought, on that multi, there's actually four floors, or is there not?
That would have, yeah, that would be, I mean, it's illustrative only, but yes.
Could we bring that down to three?
Sure. Yeah, we could do that. And so, what we're going to do here is, we'll have little stickers, or little strips with a green sticker, a yellow sticker, and a red sticker, and so we want people to put green on what they like, and put yellow on something that maybe is okay, maybe not, and red on something that they don't want. And so, hopefully, you know, if you have, you know, two hundred people come through here and look at this and participate, we should hopefully see some trends towards, you know, green blocks here and red blocks there, that'll give us some direction moving forward as a, as a community, as a planning commission, in terms of what people want to see. So, this is the Main Street board here. So, this is pretty simple, we just have this map, we have some stuff we will, we'll be able to talk about with people, and we just, people, so we'll have a bunch of sticky notes, and we want people to just write down whatever they want on a sticky note, and just stick it right on the map. So, if there's an area where intersection's not safe, or, you know, man, I'd like to be able to cross the street here, but I can't because there's no crosswalk, or this area doesn't look very good because there's no landscaping, or this sidewalk is a disaster, or you name it, right? Anything that they can think of about West Main. Again, we want people to just write down whatever they want for this area, so that we can have some guidance and some direction in terms of what kind of improvements they would like to see. And if they don't know, or if there's a comment where it's, I just want this everywhere, so maybe somebody will say, you know, we need to slow traffic, or we need additional landscaping, or we need, you know, better defined bike path, you know, along M twenty-one or something like that, they can just write it in that big blank spot we have at the bottom. And then, for the penny jars, so these are just, so these are just going to be the labels. So, like I said before, we'll just give little cups with ten pennies in them, and then they can vote on however they want. So, our topics proposed for each of the jars would be, one, sidewalks and trails, parks improvements, upgrading the infrastructure, river beautification and access, downtown beautification and placemaking, zoning and court enforcement, increased free canopy, grounded surface water protection, creating more attainable housing options, and creating more job opportunities. So, these are the ten labels, right, three, two, three, and one. Is there anything on here that you think we need to address that want to replace one with something else? Is there any thought in terms of these labels? Comes immediately to mind?
Go down through them again.
Sure. So, sidewalks and trails, and this is number four, five, and six, no, I'm sorry, geez, two, three, and four. Five, six, seven, and then eight, oops, eight, nine, and ten.
I also thought that if someone really liked trails, they could put about ten pennies there.
Yep, exactly. We have a lot of people that will just take all ten pennies, dump them into one jar, because that is, they're something they're very passionate about. Others will stand there for ten minutes and very meticulously sort out, you know, one here and two there, and it's really up to everyone else. And at the end, we total out, total out, look, and if we see that, you know, river access jar has by far the most pennies in it, then we know that as a planning commission, you know, we'll need to add some language in the plan about accomplishing those things, right? Because that's what the public is telling us that they want.
Make sure your kids have pockets in their pants.
We'll do it. And you can't do quarters, or like, you know, dollar bills, and throw it in there, we're not going to add those, we just want to stick to pennies. But this is, it's a fun, easy activity that actually gives us a lot of good information on that. It's great.
Is there any concern with the concerts bring people into the community outside of Lowell, and how much do you weigh outsiders, sort of?
Yeah, it comes up a little bit, a lot of, a lot of people, if they don't live, so if, if, there are some, a lot of people, if they don't live here, are very hesitant to participate, which is fine. But if they do, I think that's fine, too. I mean, if they're, if they live in Virgin's Township, or in Sweet Township or something, and they're coming downtown, so what? Why don't participate? I mean, they're, they shop here, they might work here, they might have family that lives here, so, you know, unless they're, you know, visiting from Chicago or something, I don't really have any issues with people who are not, you know, maybe not living in Lowell, participating.
Maybe, I'm not sure.
Yeah. And to that point, when we talk about the survey, we do ask specifically if you live in a city of Lowell or not. So, again, typically, it's ninety to ninety-five to a hundred percent of respondents live in the city, it's sort of self-sourced, but we can also just control for that, we can separate that out if we need to. If we ended up with a situation where only, you know, forty percent of your respondents lived in the city, which would be unusual, we can separate that out and sort of see what the city residents said on the survey compared to everybody else, if that was necessary, but it typically doesn't come up.
Is this exact same survey going to be used throughout the year?
So, this survey, so the survey, we'll get to that. Are there any comments on these labels?
Same, I mean, the same idea, it's going to be used consistently throughout the year.
So, we're just going to do this twice, this week and next. And so, and so, the other thing that we'll have aside from this is just these general comment cards, so this, we'll just cut this sheet of paper in half, and we'll have activities there. So, again, people can just write whatever they want, and then we'll take it back to the office and transcribe it, and then if they want to, they can leave their email address, and we can sort of email them progress reports as the project continues. For the survey, which is here, so this is just a PDF that we just spit out of Survey Monkey, so this is a little bit longer. Again, I expect this to be about a fifteen-minute exercise in terms of how long it takes. So, the first question we ask is where you live, and this is a required one, it's the only question they have to answer for taking the survey. So, this way, if they don't live in the city, that's fine, or they're still going to be allowed to take it, obviously, but this allowed to take it obviously, but this way, we can, we can sort this out if we need to. Again, I don't really anticipate it being a problem. Virtually all of your respondents are going to live in the city, and the few that don't are going to probably be in Lowell Township or for chance. So we also have a bunch of other background questions here, like how long have you lived in this area, which best characterizes your connection to the city, so they can select more than one year, so resident, citizen, business owner, whatever. We ask how old they are, how many people live in a household, and then if anyone in the household is over the age of 65, and how many of those people there are. We also ask, what is the most important reason that they live in Lowell, or if they would consider living in Lowell if they don't? So again, this is a select all that apply, so we just gave a variety of sort of typical answers here that they can choose from, or they can obviously specify something on their own and type it in this box down here. We ask if they own or rent their home, if they live in the city, we ask what sort of house they live in, so if it's a single-family home, duplex, mixed-use, manufactured home, whatever, all those options are here. We ask if they were going to relocate into the city, is the housing type they would be looking for available in the city? And what, and this is in here because we've done this before, there's a, from a lot of people that have said, well, I would move to X, Y, Z town, but I want to live in a, you know, in a townhouse, or a condo, and you guys don't have condos, something like that, so, sort of matching need with what, making sure that we're enabling what people want and need is something that we're trying to get at with, with a question like this. Number 11, we ask what types of housing are needed in the city, and again, we give a whole bunch of options here. We have some economic development questions here, so what kind of new businesses would you like to see within the city, we just give a bunch of categories. We ask where they are most likely to go for the following goods and services, so we just sort of narrows down to three fairly general groups, personal entertainment, shopping and services, and recreation or sports facilities. We don't include things like grocery shopping because there's a mire here, and I guess we're making the assumption that 95% of the people go there for groceries, you know, grocery needs. We ask for people to read the city's effort to guide and direct development and growth, excellent good, fair, or no opinion. And these all get weighted with the answer to the questions, so you can just sort it out based on the average response, and try to get, get everyone's thoughts on there. We have some mobility questions, so what sort of street improvements would be most important, they can select up to three on this one, so streetscapes, walking, walkable sidewalk systems, streets, crosswalks, biking infrastructure, trail networks, et cetera. Include this in here because obviously Lowell has made a great effort over the years to invest in naturalized trails, and so we're sort of gauging how we're doing in that respect here, that if there's any specific streets, intersections, or trail segments that need improvements, we want to write them down in number 16. Number 17 is about community investment, so we're asking how important are the following priorities, these relate to improving river access in number 17, so quieted property, expanding trails and boardwalks, protecting natural areas, providing beach access, providing or maintaining water trap launches. Number 18 asks about business priorities, so expanding shopping, expanding onto development, downtown improvements, et cetera. Number 19, in terms of housing, how important are, how important are the following, increasing housing opportunities for families, for young professionals, for seniors, improving neighborhoods, sharing diverse housing types. Number 20, we, what happened? There you go. We want people to use three words to the best describe their future vision for the city. This one, we take these, everyone's answers and plug them into like the word cloud kind of thing, so if something gets repeated a whole bunch, it'll show up really big, and so again, this will hopefully help sort of get a flavor for what people are thinking in terms of the future of the community. The last one is number 21, if there's anything else they want to write about, they can fill it in, fill in the blank question in number 21. So that's the survey, again, we're going to leave this open for quite a while, at least a month, maybe longer. We also put together a couple of flyers that will get distributed out, get them on social media, and shared around, so we have this one, and there's, oops, one other one that's out here just again, so people can, we'll have some of these printed out with us on Thursday, so they can just take, take with them, they can just scan the QR code with their phone, take them right to the survey, and they can do it right there, so they don't have to, they try to type in this URL or try to remember it off the top of their head, so hopefully make this as easy as possible to get people to participate.
You're going to have a barrier, and you're going to have that QR code, like, visible so they walk by, they can just do it right there?
Yeah, 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 we've got like a little, you know, plastic thing that'll have it sitting up there, so if someone, if they don't have time for anything else, they can just walk by, scan it, and then keep on going. But generally, we'll just be hanging out the whole time.
Well, you have these surveys available there too?
So we can have some printed copies available, if somebody does want, want to do it out there, absolutely, they can just fill it out on pen and paper, then we can just take them back to the office and enter them in if they can.
People are coming in and out of way to pay their taxes and file, and they're going to pick one up.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, we could have, I mean, I can send Sue this PDF here, we can have some, some printouts there, and they can have this flyer to be there too, so if someone wants to scan it while they're scanning there or looking for something, they can, but you're right, we should have some paper ones available just for people who don't want to use their phone or, you know.
Couldn't we have some available at the Chamber of Commerce, or, and we would like to, with a lot of people that come in and out, you know, are looking for information usually.
Yes, absolutely. So yeah, I mean, we're going to, so the, the concert series thing, isn't something that we do a ton of like promotion for, because we're going down where people already are. But for the survey, I absolutely want to make sure that we're doing our best to get the word out that it is out there, that's available, so, you know, I'd like to see these on, you know, stuck on a door of businesses and restaurants and everything else, just so if someone's standing around waiting for a table, I can see it, go, scan it, things like that as well. Other comments on the survey, questions, anything that you want to change? Too long, too short?
Too long.
Too long?
I mean, I'm the guy that I'll do one, and if it's more than 12, 14, and, right, I just, I got so much going on, and I know you're going to do it for a length of time, but, and I know we can't shorten it down, I'm looking through it, but, for me, it's just, it's just too long.
Yeah, I mean, it's a balance for us to make sure that we're asking
The right questions.
As many questions as we can, but not making it so long where people just go, oh, never mind, it's too much.
Take 20 minutes for 20 years.
Yeah, I don't want to be, it's very long, so, I mean, I think this is, what we, what we have here is, I think you're right, we're probably pushing it, you know, I mean, this is about as long as we usually go, because we don't, if we have too many questions, I mean.
I just kind of mailed all the time it took you to go through it, right?
Yeah, it's eight, five, ten minutes.
Yeah, we blew by the 10-minute mark, and it just, I know we can't change it, and I don't want to, it's good questions, but.
Sir, please just give us your name and address and give us your comments.
That's Kent, 1700 faith drive Lowell, his suggestion, I mean, the investment exercise with coins, maybe add a category about street improvements as well as, you know, trails and sidewalks, it's important to a lot of people.
Do you have streets here, under each, oh, English letter?
Oh, there it is, sorry, you flipped it through, I missed it. All right?
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
And as a city, we are doing streets, right? We've got a seven-year master planning, we have streets accounted, so it's not like, everybody wants their street done yesterday, but that's what I think you're going to find a response for that one too.
Yeah, and you know, I contemplated actually not putting that in there because I don't want everyone just to dump all their money in the streets bucket, but at the same time, those, yes, exactly.
Can we have those pennies to put towards the street projects?
Sure. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any others? Eric?
Eric Barkus, 215 West Main, I think this is really good, but I'd like, my opinion is that some pictures of some actual new types of housings would go a long way. I like to read architectural magazines, that sort of thing, and some of the, some of the new housing that they've come up with are just outstanding. An example in Ada, right by, right by the railroad bridge, the brick townhomes, that they've, they've really put in premium housing in a small space, and I just think that's outstanding, and I think that a picture of that would go a lot, would, would be voted on better than these figure, stick figures. And for instance, the tiny homes, there's, again, outstanding tiny home neighborhoods that have come, and I think you're missing that with your just one tiny house. There are, sorry, my throat's a little dry, but you could take two or three lots and put in a number of tiny homes and satisfy the desire to live here with lower costs, and these, I think Muskegon has a tiny home community.
Holland, it was.
Holland, and I think you need a picture of that here, because I think a picture, pictures would do a lot, a lot more information, and you would sway the results whether people were looking at these or actual pictures, number one.
Eric, not to interrupt you horribly, but in Muskegon, they're using them for retail stores, and it leads right into the farmer's market there.
Yeah, I've, I've known with our retail, but there's, there's, in West Michigan, there's a tiny home.
I know on Holland, that's 60.
It is in Holland, okay, great, so I don't know if there's time to do that, but I think you're, number one, you're missing a tiny home community here, or neighborhood, let's call it, number one. Next is the, back during the line chat discussions, some in the city felt that there was support for multi-story, six-story buildings. I don't tend to, tend to agree with that, but I think you should at least ask the community if there's support for high-rise apartments, and I think you mentioned it, keep it three. Well, I don't think, I think if this is going to be the master plan, it should be open-minded, and think about four, five, six, from what I've learned about developers, to keep prices down, they want to put in as many as possible. So if the city wants five, six-story buildings, then you should, you should know that. I, I don't, I don't personally want that for the city, but I think that should be in the mix. And then lastly, you mentioned, you had a question about creating more attainable housing options, I don't know what that means, I don't know how you're going to explain that, to me, and I'm, I'm an average intelligence, but I don't know what, what to answer, is that asking for low-cost housing, subsidized housing, I, I don't know what that means, so you might want to clarify that, because I wouldn't know what to answer that. And I'm glad you're asking about your concerns, because we should find out if it's, if it's the prices of homes, if it's the taxes, if it's the space, you know, maybe, maybe people could be happier with the smaller lots, and maybe, maybe you could be rezoned for some smaller parcels and get more homes in. So, but I'm glad you're asking about what their concerns are and what their top, what their top needs are, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any, anybody else? Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions?
Thanks, Andy, I think you've done a really nice job of setting the table. Do you want me to make any of the changes that Mr. Barkus was suggesting here in terms of?
I do like the idea of the tiny homes, of having.
It's a real picture, it's like.
Yeah, and a real picture, I, I, the one over in Holland is really well done, it's right off of 16th. Oh, I can't remember the cross street there, but it's.
Only thing I, I would be concerned, I like pictures, or with Alston Ward's, obviously, but in survey, you want to be unbiased, and every, the layout of this is a little blind, and without getting a survey of, this is a generic tiny home, this is comparable generic high-rise, this is a generic.
Yeah.
You have to keep it plain like this, that's the uniformity is, keeps the unbiasedness.
Yeah, I mean, we use precedent images quite a bit just to show conceptually, same kind of thing, like when we, when we say courtyard community, this is what it would look like, and sometimes we'll, and we try to, we're not going to have like a really, you know, well, obviously looking apartment building that's a really nice thing, you know what I mean, that's a really nice single-family home, we'll try to keep them all comparable in that way for sure. So I, I mean, I'll, we'll do, we'll do some checking on that, if we can find some, some good examples that will fit on this, then we can use them, if not, we'll, we'll kind of keep what, what we have here.
Well, I'd like to see us keep that last one or that one, more than three-story, right?
Yes, right now it's.
Because I think it, it's four, right, but if there's a, if it's a general population kind of thing, so this isn't so bad, and you know, great, it's a good way to test the waters.
So for the hate question, we could maybe on the survey, there might be some place on the survey where we're asking about housing, I mean, we could easily add a row in question 19, it would say encouraging taller presidential buildings, and maybe specify, you know, four stories plus.
Maybe all those stories, and with the blank, they're saying, how many stories do you think?
Yeah, and I always get to his point about like, maybe some people were really excited about the seven-story building, I mean, I don't know, it was in a bad meeting, but it sounded like it was divisive perhaps, so there could be some support for it, but we can add that to question 19 if that's, if that makes sense to you guys?
I think it's cool.
Yeah, because you know, once they ask the question, right, we've just always known that it's three-story, 40 foot, but that was put in the books how many years ago, Andy?
For, for, I mean, that's an old, I mean, it's a, it's, three stories and 35 feet is largely a fire limitation, right? You, communities don't have the interest, the equipment to put out a fire on the, you know, E4, right? So we just limit the height to three stories, or 35 feet, it's, it's really, really common in almost every small town in the state of Michigan, the country has a standard like that. But if you have a ladder truck and infrastructure, you know, the equipment to get up higher and, and address it, then certainly a conversation that the city could have, and you're right, if you're thinking, you know, 10, 20, 30 years from now.
Right, well, at least 10, right? Like, I think we're going to revisit this issue and.
Yeah, but I mean, like the, the Rockland Plan that we completed last year, they haven't updated it since 2002, that was a 20-year plan, and they didn't have energy in anything, so I mean, it, it, in theory, it could be 20 years, I would agree with you, there should be some to add.